Hello, Rob.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Sarah. You all ready? Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for attending this evening's City of Uniontown's monthly council meeting of February 6th at 5:00 p.m. Roll call.
Councilman Billy.
Here.
Councilman Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Winfrey.
Here.
Councilwoman Brown.
Here.
Mayor Gerke.
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands for a nation unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had an executive session today regarding grant funding and agreements. Tonight, we have a special guest, Marky John, and he's accompanied by his father, a good friend of everyone here, Mark Mooky John. So would you take the podium, Marky?
Hello, my name is Marky John, and last summer, me and my friends created a wiffleball league. We think it would be nice for us to have a wiffleball field at Bailey and for the community. We would appreciate if the mayor and council, along with the recreational board approves us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Marky. Well, this evening, there's a lot of things to talk about, but we're gonna let everyone get their turn to talk. Number one, maybe something that's not too pleasant with me, but I guess it all comes to that time. Our health officer, Mrs. Sue Sheer is resigning this evening, and I'd just like to thank her. She has worked for the city for 23 years, and the short time that I got to work with Sue, it was very pleasant. She did a really good job, so I can speak for the city and council that we wish her well in her future endeavors. Thank you, Sue, for all your service. I know it's, well, it's not so cold out today, but it's been cold out and everything's dirty, but we're starting to, starting our plans for our spring cleanup. Usually, we have spring cleanup at the third or fourth weekend of April, so just keep in mind, we're gonna have cleanup time, and as information comes available, we'll pass it along, but that's always a good time. I know Reverend Winfrey really likes that time, and we really have a good time all getting together and making our city look even better than what it does now. One more thing, all of our department heads, they'll give a report this evening, and instead of me singling one, two, three, or four, all of them out, I'd like to give them their opportunity to tell us all what we've been doing, but from my viewpoint, everyone that I'll call upon this evening has done a really good job, all the way from code down to the fire department and everything in between. Everyone's working as a team, and that's what we like here, and everyone's working hand in hand, so I look forward to the department reports this evening and pay special attention to what everyone says, because they all take that job very seriously. And that about does it for me. Any comments on agenda items only? Go ahead, Jack. Just state your name and your address, please. Thank you, sir.
Jack, did you leave this chair here for me? Might be a weight capacity on here.
So, Jack Swesnik, 63 Montview Street here in Uniontown, PA. I would ask council to please give your utmost consideration to agenda item number 17. I think that as the farmers market grew last year, the sense of community just grew with it, right? It was a nice thing for everyone, and I would ask you guys to consider it. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on agenda items only? Kelly? Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Jack, but I'm Kelly Schrott. I'm with Parks and Rec Board, and would just asking for your support for 17, 18, 19 for the farmers market. I'm excited, the community's excited, so just asking for your support, and I just wanted to make myself available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other comments on agenda items only? If not, that's all I have.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to receive the report of the treasure for the month of January 2025, be and the same is hereby received and filed. Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the minutes of the January 2nd, 2025 regular council meeting, be and the same is hereby accepted and filed. Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
Okay, so before we get to this next resolution, I'd like to just go ahead over and just review some of the expenditures that we have in the general fund. And that will total $187,790.35. So bear with me here, we have a few pages, so it'll take a little bit of time here. We have American Cleaning and Supply Services for $281. We have AT&amp;T, $65. Auto Land of Uniontown for $1,252.13. We have a breeze line, one account breeze line for $334.90. We also have another breeze line for $25.99. Burnsworth Garage, Inc., $7,050.50. C. Harper, $1,775.63. We have Accountings Creative Company for $30. Central Independent Energy LP for $2,327.45. Columbia Gas, $5,722.63. Cool Spring Stone Supply, $6,125.62. D&amp;M Trucking, $12,142.32. D&amp;R Cyber Tech LLC, $175.40. Fast Signs of Uniontown, $30. Fayette Parts. There is multiple accounts. This one account for Fayette Parts, $1,145.95. Another Fayette Parts, $19.98. First Commonwealth Advisors, $1,099.16. Ford Business, $7.11. Full Service Network, $991.83. George R. Smalley Company, Inc., $3,377.50. Hanover Flag Company, $2,815.85. Highway Supply Company, $986.25. Hoff Consulting LLC, $100. Hoffman Kennel, Inc., $735. Heranik, $2,111. Hunter Truck Sales, $614.40. Import Export Tire Company, $3,267.96. Intermediate Net, Inc., $361.97. Janitor Supply Company, $387.60. K2 Engineering, $450. Car Nuts, $1,158.81. Koval Building and Plumbing Supply Company, $307.40. Little F E's monogramming, $38. Lowe's. $630.54. Motorola Solutions, $5,606.25. Reimbursement for an employee, $111.50. O'Reilly Automotive, $88.40. Office of UC Tax Services, $132. Palco Power Systems, $1,286.47. Pennsylvania Water, $5,516.75. Penny Bowles Global Financial Services LLC, $484.92. Proton O'Bryden, Inc., $111.43. Quill Corporation, $189.15. Rida Communications, $814.75. Ryan Oil Company, $503.30. Safeway Pest Control, $40. Teamsters 491 Benefits Fund, $40,533.25. The Hartford, $1,600.65. Employee reimbursement, $61.57. Tractor Supply Company, $171,000, or, excuse me, Tractor Supply Company, $171.39. UPS, $61.57. Vermin Control, $50. West Penn Power, $4,751.53. And that is your general fund. There were a few that was left out, but that's totaling just about $187,790.35. Go ahead.
Okay. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Uniontown for the month of January 2025. General fund is $187,790.35. Sewer fund, $121,642.80. Recreation, $129.78. Recycling, $762.50. Highway, $39,739.17. Off-street, $4,357.96. Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into an agreement with the City of Uniontown and the Uniontown Sons of Italy, Gasepi Mazini Lodge 231, for the purpose of the Uniontown Sons of Italy to host an event, the Italian Festival, in the City of Uniontown on Saturday, August 9th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And Sunday, August 10th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for a one-time payment to the City of Uniontown for $5,000. Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes, just one thing on this. This is the same agreement that we've entered into the last few years with them, and they've done a really nice job in showcasing our city, so that's a nice relationship that we have with the Sons of Italy. So thank you very much, and they were on top of it early this year. They had called me and said, hey, let's get the ball moving, so they're very responsible, and I'm sure we'll have a good time at that event. Thank you.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve to purchase a pallet of sand and concrete mix from Lowe's Home Depot Center, or Lowe's Home Center, for a total cost of $709.12. Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve to purchase a high-torque impact wrench friction kit from Koval Building Supply for $678.67 for the Public Works Department. Councilman Billy.
Touch base with Mr. Williams. Uh, yes, we already have Milwaukee set up. One of the batteries quit working, and we're always feeling wrong impact, just barring it from work home fees and stuff, and it'd be nice to have our own. We're going to do a bar on this, and we need to replace the battery here anyway, so.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve rate strip to spray commercial grade sealant at Grant Street Park's Walkways Courts and Pavilion area for a cost of $2,400. Service will be paid from funds raised in the Uniontown Property Development Corporation's fund. Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the City of Uniontown's farmers market dates to be May 31st, 2025 through September 27th, 2025. Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve to waive the peddler's fee for the vendors of the City of Uniontown's farmers market being held at Bailey Park for the 2025 season. Councilman Billy.
No.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
No.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the Recreation Board's request for an exemption waiver to permit the sale of sold alcoholic beverages at the farmers market. Councilman Winfrey.
No.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
No.
I would like to table number 20. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, so procedurally, there's a motion to table on the floor for tabling a resolution item 20. Motion was made by Councilman Billy, seconded by Mayor Gerke. We'll go ahead and take the roll call on the motion to table, so that would just be to table this. We'll go, Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
All right, so that is tabled for further consideration by council at a later date.
Thank you.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and the agency charged with granting permits to allow the placement of signs or banners within state, rate, or ways, and whereas the Department of Transportation requires the City of Uniontown to pass a resolution to authorize the placement of banners or signs and to set certain limits on the said banners or signs, and whereas the City of Uniontown wishes to allow banners and signs relative to national, regional, or local functions or charitable affairs. Each application shall be submitted to the City of Uniontown Secretary at least 20 days prior to installation, so that the application and copy of the resolution may be forwarded to the Department of Transportation. Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, I am requesting that the City Council approve a refund for the following payment was made by the Uniontown Library for an alarm permit and should be exempt. Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the resignation of the Health Officer Sue Sheer effective immediately. Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise full-time public works position. Councilman Billy.
Yes.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve to hold public hearings and prepare, introduce, and advertise ordinance to extend the local economic revitalization tax assistance for five years. Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Billy.
I will have to abstain due to what with County, the LARA program. Our office in the county administers this program.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey.
Yes.
Mayor Gerke.
Yes.
But just to touch base on the LARA program, so the benefits, the weight of the benefits, so, so much. So, anything, any renovation over 65% or new construction for five years remains through the abatement program exempt. So say you have a city lot, you have a building that you renovate, that over 65% improvements, and then whatever is, what will happen, you know, with any renovation that's extensive effective age, graded condition can be changed, and up goes your square, your rate per square foot. So what this does is this, this, this abatement incentive program for five years, any improvements, and what this does is it spurs growth. It also takes the blighted areas, these abandoned buildings, it gives incentive to turn this around. So, thank you for the support of your vote today.
At this time, we'd like to have the department reports first on the agenda. Code, Mr. Price.
Good evening. To Mayor Gerke, to City Council, just want to thank you, as always, for your continuous support and encouragement. Sweep citations have kind of simmered down a tad, just due to the winter storm we had last month and to the frigid temps and the snow, but still having a strong code presence within the city. Some of the issues that we are still dealing with are trash, rubbish, old abandoned cars, furniture, and building structures, but things are improving in a good way in a lot of our locations throughout our great city, so I definitely want to celebrate those victories. So, last month, had the honor and the pleasure of serving and posting all of the notice of delinquency notices for the commercial properties. Starting Monday, at the request of Mayor Gerke, City Council, and the Chief of Police, I will start working on the unpaid business permits. Once I make a site visitor or call to the businesses, they will have 48 hours to get that paid, or sweep ticket will be issued for operating a business without a proper permit or license. I will check in daily with the License Department here in City Hall, just to make sure that we have an updated list, just to make sure that I'm not working twice. And all these reports will be uploaded to our new software that Ms. Simmons was able to help us set up, and that is iWork. Again, just want to thank the ladies in City Hall for all their continuous helping finding phone numbers, logging info in for code, and keeping track of the sweep tickets. So far, since our last meeting, there have been 10 sweep citations, nine of them said I need to turn them in to you today or tomorrow. So, a total of 10 sweep citations, 14 state citations, and the state citations are when people fail to pay the sweep tickets that are posted on their door or either mailed to the house, and so it was a total of 14 state citations. Seven of those are quality of life violations, which is the unpaid sweep ticket, and then the other seven are restitution of non-payment, and then those go over to the magistrate's office, and most times, we'll have a hearing on those. Two code letters issued, and then 11 commercial property notice of delinquency notice have been posted, and then two vehicles have been tagged to be towed. That's all I have on my report. Any questions? All right, appreciate you guys.
Okay, Terrence, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Our engineer report, Josh.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I'll keep this as brief as I can. For the month of January, two permits were issued in the city. One was for a commercial re-roof at City Mission Gouton School Apartments. The second permit was issued for residential demolition at 33 Mifflin Avenue. No zoning permits were issued, no flood plain permits were issued. Code enforcement. There's two items I want to address that I don't have on this report, the first being the former Yum Yum Donuts building. Terrence and I inspected the building and sent a notice of violation to the owner, just requesting that he correct the violations as noted. He's contacted my office, and I've requested a plan of action from him in writing detailing what he plans to do with the property. He has the option to either demolish the property or bring the building up to code, as well as clean up a lot of trash on the property. Second being the Gouton apartment building. Terrence and I performed an inspection yesterday. We've received multiple complaints about this property. Trash issues, a roach infestation, three units don't have working heat currently. There was also an odor of sewer gas in the building. I believe it's probably from dry traps, but we were able to make contact with building maintenance. They are working on restoring the three units that currently don't have heat, and they have provided those units with temporary heat. They've contracted with a local heating company to get the non-operational units restored or replaced. Terrence has spoke with the regional manager today about the trash. She's soliciting quotes right now to replace the trash chute. As far as the roach infestation, they did treat the building approximately a week ago for that infestation, and we're going to continue to monitor that. I do want to say, the property's come under new management within three months, and it seems like they're being much more proactive with cleaning up this property, but we're going to stay on top of it and make sure that they address all these issues. The two garages, one at 67 Stewart and 410 Evans, these are still pending hearings. The old YMCA building, I do have a court date scheduled right now. It's at the end of February to get the issue addressed with that building. Derrick Avenue, it was a zoning violation. I'm going to remove that from the list. We haven't had any issues with that property. If needed, we'll address it to get into our active projects on the engineering side. The Bailey Court Rehab, we're still working on pricing with El Grande. The Bailey Court Rehab, we're still working on pricing with El Grande, we'll provide that to you. The Penn and Beeson Traffic Light, we're going to table that for now until any further action needs taken, we'll be able to pick up the project immediately if necessary. And then item six is just some funding opportunities for grants. If you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out to us. That's everything I have for this month.
Very good. Thanks, Josh. Thanks for your hard work, too. Public Works? Mr. Parulinski?
Hi, good evening, everyone. First off, I'd just like to thank the mayor and council for the approval on the ordinances. We're advertising for another employee. I know there was no, it wasn't budgeted for a new employee this year, but we just recently had one resign in the sewage department, so that's why we're advertising to try to fill that position to get the small crew an additional help, helping hand. For the sewage collection this month, they took in a total of two-hundred-twenty-four-thousand five-hundred-sixty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. That's for January here, and as again, as I always say, those girls, they're great help, and they keep the bills coming in and keep them in order here to keep the sewage funded and flowing here. We've had some backups, but for the most part, we've been able to keep them all open in the sewage. Just recently, our jetter truck is having some emission issues, I had to get it towed to garage, and then that's when a backup happened, so we did just have to call a contractor and come blow line out where sewage was flowing down the road. But luckily, we were able to get that open, too, without having to do any excavation. Sewage Department is responsible for responding to all the one calls, and during the winter here, there was an abundance of them as the temperatures change from thawing and freezing and all the utility lines move, and there was only myself and another employee that understands the whole process and is really able to mark the lines, as we don't have very good mapping, so we do our best to try and keep up with that, and we had a meeting, and the one call, Leah Zorn was there, and he was telling us how we have one of the best responses, response times, and keeping them in track there. So, I'd just like to thank my employee Chris here for helping me with the one call and keeping track of all of them. For the street department, we've had, had some large bills here. We've been keeping up with the snow pretty good, I think, through the snowstorms. There's been some pretty hectic ones. We've had some expensive bills with them, the trucks are twenty-plus years old, and it just happens that some of them break down at the same time. The one truck needed a new transmission and clutch, the other truck just needed a new clutch, and then the third truck just got the clutch adjusted, so hopefully they'll be good here for the rest of the winter. They are out attacking potholes, they've been out getting potholes ever since the snow quit. I know there's a lot of them, as the temperatures here are freezing and thawing, and they're doing their best to keep up with those, to keep traffic safe and moving. The street sweeper was actually out here this week to get some of the heavy debris. I know the rainstorm we just had washed a lot of debris in the intersections, and they'll be back out tomorrow hitting a lot of the main intersections and drags where heavy buildup occurs. And as far as that, that's all I really have. Any questions or issues?
I have to say, John, that, you know, the, two days ago, downtown looked beautiful, the streets were clean, you know, going through the season and seeing, you know, and then coming out and seeing the streets clean, it was, you know, it was a very surprising sight the one morning. Good job on that, keeping that. My area focus this year is going to be making sure that we're on top of all our street cuts and, and the jetter contracts that we have, so, you know. It was just emissions on the jetter?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'd like to hit the, you know, our jetter contracts, all the, all of the mutual agreements that we have, especially with the Housing Authority, make sure that we're hitting that, and also, you know, any of the, any of the basic amounts that we need. But that, my main focus this year is, is definitely going to be in the street cuts.
Yeah.
You'll probably hear me say a lot about it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I do know that the Housing Authority, the contract is like year to year, so I'll have to get them to send a new one over and then...
Because I've just recently had reviewed some of the, well, all the properties that in the pilot program, and we, you know, we do have, the pilot programs that pay and move taxes, so, and what that is, is exempt properties. They have a share that they contribute, even though that they are exempt, so. And that was a number of the Housing Authority properties, so that would be good to look at. Thank you. Let me know whenever you're getting ready to talk to them. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, John. Redevelopment Authority, Ms. Simmons?
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump there, Chris.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Sorry, Sarah, I only printed five. So, I'll go in order, but I do have some good news tonight. The CDBG status meeting will be held March twenty-eighth at ten a.m. We've changed those to quarterly. If you can attend that, great, I'd like to review the CDBG program, the twenty-twenty-five projects, and just get you acquainted with what's next. The twenty-twenty-four application is under review for code enforcement, blight demolition, Marshall Park and Grant Street Park. The state has come back to us and has requested quite a bit of clarification on those projects, so I'm trying to navigate through what they see to be substantial projects. Our public hearing is coming up, which would be either March through May for twenty-twenty-five's application, and the monitoring still is pending. In your packets tonight, I gave you the quick glance review sheet. You'll see all the gray at the top are completed projects, so those are projects that are all done, that's going to basically fall off the quick glance sheet, and you'll see only the active projects. Active projects are Calvary United Methodist, there's an RFQ Engineering Services Agreement being drafted now between McMillan Engineering, and we'll be working on laying out that scope of work. State Theater, external rehabilitation. We are in conversations with Spoh to be sure that we're keeping the, the building historic and replacing it to their specifications. And One Voice One Community Tutoring Program has been going well, we've, are on our third drawdown, so the CDBG funds are funding tutoring there. The blight remediation planning is underway, it's, it's taken off really well. K2 Engineering was able to help us do condition assessments, and the partnership with University of Pittsburgh, they created the course, and now we have students that are out and about. If you see a group of students out and about, they're assessing, assessing the properties. I, I know you really can't see it on these maps, but I'm going to leave these here with you. All of the orange, and you can pass this down if you want, are properties that's been assessed, and the one with less orange is properties that are in poor condition. So, first time for a while, maybe ever, that we actually have a map of properties that are considered poor, blighted properties, so we can pursue the funds and actually put use the, the plan that we're, we're funding and iWork, so we're fully utilizing it to its fullest potential. So, it's going great. Anytime you'd like a tour of iWork, I'd be happy to do that. I do screen shares and can show you all about it, so let me know. The comprehensive planning with McMillan Engineering is going well. I've reached out to some community members and just trying my best to schedule those neighborhood meetings. We do have some important meetings coming up in February called Welcoming the Legislators. We dibbed it Welcoming the Legislators last month, or last year. We'll be meeting with Senator Stefano, State Representative Krupa, and we also will be meeting with the County Commissioners, which is called Welcoming the County. So, they'll be coming to City Hall next week. We, we welcome them in our doors, give them agenda, and review our progress and goals and, and get their input, so that's exciting for February, especially because we're opening a new grant cycle. The sewage transportation priority projects, no further updates, no meetings scheduled. Story Square, just want to let the public know, we rent Story Square, so if you want to run it, we'll give you the information. Sons of Italy did stop by, I did get an email to get them set up, so they'll be submitting that. We've really streamlined the rental process. It's, this is the first year we fully put it to use, and it's been going really smooth. It's very helpful to Bo Shannon and I to have that quick and swift, and so it's working great. We also want the city to know that we prioritize the rehabilitation of Story Square. We've put that in our priority projects list, and we're going to be trying to get any available funds and pursue grant funds. We're looking at one right now that, that might work through lows, and we've just prioritized that, that rehab. They did level the sidewalks, sidewalk looks great, there's no more raised sidewalks, so no more tripping, hopefully. The downtown Uniontown Business District did submit the Main Street Matters Grant. We could expect to maybe hear back in April if we are going to get that, which just lines us up to move forward with a designation. We appreciate the conversations with City Council to discuss a potential cooperation agreement or some sort of organized agreement so that the city can, the downtown Business District can fully serve the city and provide administration services that will benefit the city and the city's businesses. The Economic Development Cooperation Agreement, which is also up for review, includes the landlord registration program. The iWork setup is underway. We will be sending out landlord invoices, we hope, very soon, and using iWork to track that. We would like to have conversations of the vacant building ordinance, and we would like to review those and get an idea, while we're doing these condition assessments and while we're tracking rentals, we're running into vacant buildings, so we want to know if, how the vacant building ordinance it works and how we can assist with the administration. There's no, it's a duplication of efforts, we're out there already, and reviewing that, so I wanted to have that conversation with, with council. And best news for last, I guess, the Strategic Management Planning Program was awarded, and it's, it's really exciting that they awarded that. I, I brought a little overview that I forgot to print out. This is around sixty-two thousand dollar grant where the city committed to funding ten percent of this grant, around six thousand, that the city would need to leverage literally one thousand percent leverage. It's a spectacular program. We were able to get the match. What this grant does is puts together a five-year financial plan. It reviews the management structures, it reviews technology, and it puts us all into a nice document. A third party would do this, and then that document is used to pursue grant funding. So, the, the state has awarded that, and we are in the steps of getting that execute, executing that agreement, and I foresee us having a meeting to get, to get you up to date with that. This third party would come in and interview all of you, they would interview all of the staff, both co, both the downtown Business District and Redevelopment Authority, and do a very close review of the finances, so that's just super exciting. Congratulations to City Council for getting that funding. Now, the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program, not, not so fun, but that one was not awarded for Marshall Park. There was around sixty million dollars in applications submitted, and there was only, or maybe it was like ninety million dollars, and there, and, and, and there was only sixteen million to, to be spent. So, it's a really competitive program, and a lot of the people that were awarded this year applied last year and didn't get it last year. So, don't give up, I think we should pursue, continue to pursue the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program to get accomplished, to, to kind of get in that streak of getting those funds. We will start looking at the preparation of the twenty-twenty-five cycles and reviewing the exhibit in our cooperation agreement, so I'd like that to be up in March for us to execute that new agreement. I know that the stipend's been committed, but we want to iron out our responsibilities and what we are going to do for you. One of them is to manage the stamp program, but review that and get it cleared up. And last update, staff, feels like it's, she's been here a lot longer, but we hired a program manager in the vacancy that we had. This, this Natasha Belazik has two years' experience in the CDBG and Home Program. She's hit the ground running, we've gotten it established. Soon, we'll have our home rehabilitation guidelines up for your review, and we've made great progress with the applications that are out, and with USDA, we're, we have about four that's ready to submit already. So, any questions on the stamp program or any other thing? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Crystal. Police? Chief DeWitt?
Good evening, everybody. Sorry I'm not in uniform like I normally am. I've been in training all this week, and will be in training all next week for a leadership class that's free through Penn State, was offered me for, free through Penn State for police executives, so, sorry. Court uniform. During the month of January, the Uniontown Police Department responded to six-hundred-and-seventy-seven calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included one robbery, thirty-four vehicle accidents, four assaults, six frauds, eighteen welfare checks, thirty-two domestics, five assist-fire calls, eighteen disorderly conducts, thirteen warrant services, twenty-three emergency medical assists, seventeen assist other police, seven harassments, two shots fired, thirty-two alarms, I'll get into that in a minute, thirty-two alarms, nine thefts, three public intoxications, ten controlled substance cases, thirteen animal complaints, fifty-seven suspicious persons' activities or vehicles, and two overdoses. Officers made a total of forty-six criminal arrests, issued twenty-six non-traffic citations and seventy-one traffic citations. We conducted vehicle and foot patrols of the city parks, trails, and garages as we normally do. For those of you that don't know, I talked about it a little bit at the last council meeting, we did take delivery of a side-by-side that was purchased at zero-dollar cost to the city. Took delivery of it last week, it's delivered now to the outfitter where it's going to get vinyl done on it, and then from there, it'll get shipped off for light sirens and all alike. That vehicle will be used specifically for our trail, our city parks, and any major events we have downtown. So, when, when we can announce who that group was that did that, I, I can't wait to, to kind of show you guys all that. But I made a point to say I was going to talk about the permits. So, we've been saying it over and over and over again, that we have permit fees, and permit fees aren't getting paid. We have a compiled list from the ladies down the hall. The Police Department, I have a, a specific officer who's going to be managing the alarm permits and violations therein. We will begin enforcing those in February, this will be our last one. If you do not have an alarm permit, and you have an alarm at your house, and we checked that list, and you don't have an alarm, there won't be a phone call, you will get a citation. Understood? Any questions, anyone? Thank you.
Thank you, chief, as always. Fire Department, Chief Con.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Always start out with our activity as far as our incidents for the month. This is for the month of January twenty-twenty-five. We had ten, ten fire-related incidents. These included fortunately only one building fire. However, we also had a kitchen fire, two scorched burns, but no ignition and forced smoke conditions with the fire failing to ignite. So, as I always say, we had a lot of close calls. Fortunately, we got to them fast, and believe me, you, as brutal as January was with the cold, you definitely don't want a fire. You don't want it any month of the year, but especially in weather like that. And then finally, we also had one trash fire. Thirty-four rescue-related incidents, these included twenty-two vehicle collisions. Only three of those had injuries, so again, fortunate that that wasn't more, especially with, you know, the way things were with the ice and whatnot. Six locks out, lockout or gain access for EMS crews. We had one machinery rescue, five extrications of annihilated or injured person from a building. We had thirteen hazardous condition incidents, these included one power line down, five gas leaks, three carbon monoxide incidents, and two flammable liquid spills. We did seventeen service-related incidents, these included three persons in dis- These included three persons in distress, three lockouts, two standbys for another fire company, five water issues. We had a lot of pipes broke because of the freezing and then re-thawing, unfortunately. We had two assist the police or other governmental agency incidents and two general public service incidents. We ran twenty fire alarm activations, and we did one public fire education and fire prevention detail. These included pre-planning and familiarization of the building, also staff training. You know, a little bit less because it's the first of the year, and you're right in the dead of winter, but I'm sure that's going to ramp up as the year goes on. Moving on to, into training are conducted by personnel for the month. There again, you know, things kind of waned down a little bit in, in the winter months, but we still did pretty good. We had over thirty-two man-hours of training, so that was decent. We have actually conducted a lot already in the month of February, and we have several other ones planned, so we're always trying to move forward. Not much on apparatus updates. Rear, rear tires were installed, installed on the ladder truck last month, and I believe March is our next one that's due for state inspections, so fortunately, a little bit of break from that. And then finally, Thursday night, everybody knows what Thursday night is, so the doors open five o'clock, which they should be open now, games begin at six forty-five, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
At this time, it's the time for public comment. We have the same rules that we've had for quite a while, three minutes to your comment and conduct yourself in a generally type fashion. So, at this time, anyone have any public comment? If not, that's all I have.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown that council hereby adjourns to meet March sixth, 2025, at five p.m. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes, and thank you all for attending.